All right. Cornelia?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Murrow?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Okay, item number three is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 28, 2019. Do I have a motion? Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 28? Hamilton?
Yes.
Murrow?
Yes.
Cornelia?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Item number four is reports from staff. Do you have an inspector's report?
Sure. I'll give you a little bit of inspector's report. I'm the acting city inspector until somebody gets hired. First of all, if you didn't know that, there's actually been a ton of projects going on in town for some reason. So everybody wants to build stuff right now. So we're going through a lot of permits, carports, portable buildings. We do have two, well, three construction projects that are working right now. So we have the remodel at the Alva High School up there right now that they're taking the old locker room and the old art room and revamping all of it. We have one at Northwest Technology Center that they're doing a remodel project. And then we have a project down here on the downtown square that's getting ready to kick off, and it's called the Legacy Project. It's made it through plan review and getting ready to go on it. We're starting to get our yearly complaints in about properties. So we're addressing those complaints accordingly or as I can get to them as they come in on it. But busy, busy, definitely. You guys have any questions for me on that brief report?
Are the rules on complaint ones, are they still the same as they don't do anything, they're fined and told to answer?
Right, correct. Yeah, well, we, once we address the complaint, send them a certified letter, give them their timeline. If they don't comply with it on that, then we'll start issuing fines or citations for those.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. City Council report?
I don't have much to report, but you'll see on the agenda that there's a discussion regarding international existing business code. I have been contacted by some businesses that have concerns with our current code. And there's a potential that a discussion on adopting a new code for business expansion could be appropriate. So last council meeting, I reported the council would be taking it to planning commission as well as our ordinance review committee to have that discussion and make recommendation. We did elect new council members earlier this month. So we've got three new members with Greg Bowman in Ward 1, Taylor Dowling in Ward 2, or excuse me, Greg Bowman in Ward 4, Taylor Dowling in Ward 2, and Troy Brooks in Ward 3. Daniel Winters kept his seat in Ward 1, and the rest of the council members remain the same. Chris Eckhart went off, Brian Wallace went off, and Beau Hannaford went off. I think, I didn't look before I came in, but I think we'll have one or two of you up for reappointment this year, and we'll be talking to you guys to see if you're willing to continue serving or not. Charles looks excited.
I think I'm up in June.
I know it's June, I can remember. Do you guys have any questions from a city council standpoint? I know there's gonna be a, probably, you know, you're busy right now, but the word on the street, the arena is where you operate around this summer, so there will probably be some other projects coming before you and before the inspector as well, so.
Thank you. Okay, item number five is discussion and recommendation on a request to change the zoning from commercial to residential for the construction of a new house at 201 Flynn Street. Legal description, Alva, original town, block 42, lot 1 and 2. You have an attachment in your packet.
And Bernie is here on behalf of the homeowner.
Okay. Just originally, from when the lot was bought, they were under the understanding that it was residential, not commercial. So that's why we're having to go through this whole rezoning process. I mean, these are, my client is from Tulsa, they're retired, they want to move to Alva. He came and played Northwestern football. He loved the town. He wants to bring his family here. So, I mean, I don't know what else. So, I mean, right there with the house we were wanting to build, there's more residential homes than commercial. You have the hairdresser right across the street, then the funeral home down the street. Everywhere else, houses all the way around, so.
Are there any reasons we shouldn't do the zoning?
No. So, the zoning that that was in, that had a section within that commercial side of it, that if it had a residential structure on it, which it did about 10 years ago before they tore it down, if they would've tore it down and built right back, it would've been perfectly fine based upon our zoning regulations. Since it's set idle for over those 10 years and required it to come to the planning commission if a residential property ever went back onto it because it is zone commercial, medium density commercial on it. So my recommendation would be to take lots 1 and 2 and make that an RGA in zoning for it, which would require it to have at least 8,000 square foot of property to build on.
And it does.
Yeah, I think it's a...
Or 2,900.
Brian? I was under the impression that if it was zoned commercial, you could still construct a residential property, but if it was zoned residential, you couldn't construct a commercial property.
So our zoning ordinance on that property and how it's zoned states that if it has a residential property on it, it can go to residential until it was torn down, then it reverts back to the gym on it, commercial.
Brian, do they have to have the approval of the 300-foot, like do a trailer house?
I did not do a 300-foot request out there. I didn't think...
I mean, was it supposed to be?
No, I, not that in my understanding it wasn't, that it had to have their approval for the 300-foot around it. I mean, that, that area at Second and Flynn right there is more residential than any commercial property.
So you're talking protest?
Yeah, I mean, there was, I know a couple of years ago when I had a buyer for whoever was city inspector then, it was a 25-step process to get it done.
Yeah, I didn't see the need of doing that for any protest on that property. It had an existing residential house on it. So I just, I made it, I made that decision that it went to the planning commission to get a rezon on it. I didn't, I didn't think it fit the...
Well, I didn't either, I mean...
Fit the need of the protest.
It's stupid to be anywhere, it'd be a residential.
We did post-public hearing notification that there would be a public, that this would be taking place tonight, and so there was the ability to protest.
Well, yeah, I, the other house there looks better than the place at the lot.
Exactly.
And it's not gonna be a modular home either, so.
No, I mean, it's gonna be a state-built frame house, and it's gonna build it.
Would be me.
It'd be my recommendation to rezon it.
I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to rezon it to residential.
Okay. Tyler, second.
Thank you.
Clarification, residential RGA?
Yes, RGA.
Clarification, RGA, residential.
Thank you. So I have a motion, I have a motion, so Murrow?
I made a motion, yes.
Yes, okay. Crawford?
Second.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cornelia?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and recommendation on a request to change the zoning from RGA 8 to RGA 6 at 314 Maple Street. The legal description is Bowers First, Block 3, West 60 of Lot 9 and 10.
This is, this property is owned by Erin and Lisa Vermillion. Basically, it, it is zoned RGA 8, sets on a corner alley lot off of Maple between 4th and 5th right there. They're requesting to enclose their carport area and extend it out to add square footage to the house. The only thing that holds them up is their percentage of coverage. They don't have 8,000 square feet, so, which in turn, that's what's required to get the coverage or to do the building permit. So they would need to be rezoned to RGA 6 to get that building permit. So basically, they don't have enough lot width and length based off what it's zoned to build. If it was RGA 6...
That's a short lot.
Yeah, RGA 6 would allow them to do that expansion, expansion for their house.
Well, I think I'll build out to the edge of the house, and let's say, what's your direction you're going, you know?
They're going to the north.
Oh, they're going north?
Going north.
So they're gonna access it from the alley there?
Huh?
From the alleys, that where they're gonna come in?
It's gonna be an additional living bedroom on it. The front door staying the same, it's gonna be an additional living space.
Yeah, that's only two-bedroom upstairs, basement.
Right. Yeah, it's not a lot of square foot.
No, it's sold, yeah.
And their family's growing, so they need this square footage. So when I went before plan review, when I reviewed that and got their lot dimensions, they just, they didn't have the coverage or the square footage of lot space to build. So it'd be my recommendation to change it from RGA 8 to RGA 6.
I'll make a motion, we change it from RGA 8 to RGA 6?
Second. Murrow?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cornelia?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Crawford, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That goes back to that rezoning that we were working on a couple of years ago, there's a lot. I mean, there is, I mean, up and down the numbered streets, we thought we discussed that thing because we're split on half lot, and...
There's a bunch of those, I think, that...
Yeah, and that's one of those that's split on a...
You give them some that are 25 and 100, and then you give some that are 85 and 150?
Yeah, I mean, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare.
Okay, item number seven, discussion and recommendation to adopt international existing business code. There's an attachment in your packet.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm gonna correct Mary Kelly Parker and you. It's international existing building code, not business code.
I put it in the wrong.
Yeah? I didn't put it in the wrong. Sorry.
Okay. It is, it is building code?
I'm embarrassed to have that.
Oh, yeah. I was hearing that, I'm like, well, commercial does have to do with businesses, but I heard Kelly say it first, so.
I think I just read it. I didn't say it should have to be building code.
It is, it is my fault.
Existing building codes. Actually, I've talked about to several committees probably over the last five years on existing building codes. It's, I never really understood why we've never adopted it because we have such a historical and aged infrastructure downtown on the square, buildings, you know, that continue to be sold or used and used as mercantile buildings, you know, for retail sales on it. Some of the things that the existing building code, and this only has to do with commercial property. This doesn't have to do with residential property or anything like that, it's only commercial. It gives you three phases of construction. For example, when you go through there based off of percentages, that lessens the code and keeps you under the requirements of bringing it up to code, to new code, let's say, or the new code standard or the existing code standard. So some of these buildings, it would really help out, some of them wouldn't. But this is something that we do need to utilize and have within our codes. And it, it's about 14 chapters in the existing building code, but it would definitely, it would help out business owners. Now, I just don't want people to get confused when, with state statute. And when you buy property or change the use of the property, or if the property stays vacant for more than 90 days, you still have to bring those up to code on it. But if somebody that had a retail sales shop that wanted to change design and do different things, there's different levels that would keep them from having to bring it all the way up to new code standards. As our code's set right now, anybody that does anything, and Tyler can attest to this, and Bernie can attest to this, you have to bring everything up to code standard. That's just how our ordinances are set. We have nothing else to turn to. Legally, we couldn't turn to the existing building codes because they're not adopted within our current city ordinances on it. So, you know, it's my recommendation because it helps us start to occupy buildings now or make remodel constructions that doesn't bring everything up to code. It gives people a little bit more of a pocket-friendly code addition on it. And, you know, like I said, we have a lot of historical buildings that are just setting vacant, that could be done with, and this has the historical preservations within it also. So I was hoping to have the whole codebook here, you know, so you guys could view, but I will just briefly skim over some of the things that are within it. Talks about the course of enforcement, you know, that's one of the first chapters. Definitions, compliance methods, how they meet compliance. Classifications of work, so this gives you what's called an alteration, level 1, 2, and 3 in it, that's really the big things. Or the repair standards on that, and that goes to building elements and materials to where your protections of your walls don't have to come up to normal code standards so they don't have to be hour rated or too hour rated on the separations of use on it. Means of egress, so means of egress is basically how you get from one point to an exit. The width space, you know, your doors may be smaller because they were smaller doors back then. The doors may swing inward and not outward because egress in the new code standard says, hey, the doors have to swing outwards if your occupancy loads above 50 on there. So then it goes through and defines your different alterations. Now, you can get into an alteration 3 in the existing building code that will make you bring everything up to code depending on the usage. But it also gives us people the ability to use those different alteration guidelines already in an existing structure in the same existing use versus bringing everything up to code. So it's my recommendation that we, we adopt this code. We should've had this code back in 2002 when we adopted the international building codes and fire codes, so.
Is that why Taco Mile's for sale again?
No, Taco Mile, I won't talk too much on it, but it was, basically just didn't want to follow the rules type deal on it.
This wouldn't have prevented that change?
No, this wouldn't have because the architectural statutes entitled 74 say anytime that a building's sold or the occupancy use is changed or sets dormant for 90 days, they have to have an architect. Well, since a restaurant's considered an assembly where people gather and retail sells for what the marijuana shop that it was going to be required an architectural set of plans.
Makes sense, right?
So, they just were never provided, that's why it's being sold.
If you, if you guys make a recommendation to city council, we will have the ordinance that is in there, our city attorney is reviewing that ordinance, but we'll also go before our ordinance committee for review to make sure we have all the appropriate language before it goes to city council.
I don't really have anything to add. I, I think it would help some of our businesses that are growing to grow more easily, and I think, I think we can still do this and keep our community safe.
So instead of adopting this, we need to, we need to recommend it to the ordinance committee? To move it to the ordinance committee?
Well, you could, it's already going to the ordinance committee, you can recommend it for approval by city council.
Okay.
Or not.
The typo on the...
Building versus business, that doesn't create any issues here, right? Just a technical error, when you make your motion, make sure it's the same building.
Brian, if you change the usage of the building, like we did on Van Steel?
Right.
Do you go under the IABC or you still follow back under...
It goes on the alterations, Tyler, on it. So if that building with removal walls and different things on your building, it probably would've fell under an alteration 2, which would've been 50% because that's about what you did.
So it would still help out?
It would've helped him out in this situation, sure.
Because I mean, yeah, we, like you saw, we ran through a lot of hoops just to make it happen, which, which this would have, this would help out tremendously.
Right. So.
Who is it that sets the levels? Is it the code inspector or?
No, the, the levels are the classification of work in here, and this may help you understand. This is a little portion of the IABC, and if you look on the classifications of work, it gives you the different levels, and when you go to those chapters, it tells you what type of performance at those levels are. You're more than welcome to read on that if you would like to, or I can explain it to you. So there may, and it may limit some protection, you know, like I said, with the door swinging outwards, it may limit you from, you know, having different fire protection that's in there that wouldn't be required because it stayed the same or the same usage. Gives you some different guidelines to go by on it. But if you get into what's called a level 3, generally, it brings it all up to code or pretty close to it within there. There's really not much separation between the new and the old, especially in like mixed usages. So if you have, say like the downtown mall and some different things like there, you have business offices, and then you, you could possibly, well, you have the gun shop, you know, retail sales, so you have M's and B's, and say somebody wants to put a food shop in there, so you have an assembly, and then you have the garage next door, say somebody puts in a, you know, small car dealership or repair shop, you know, that would fall under a different classification. And then whatever the most strictest code is, is what you go by anyway on it, except for the I, IABC depending on different levels.
They would be able to never educate those individual builders?
Right.
Which that would be nice for those smaller guys that wouldn't want to have to keep everything up to code, that a restaurant's gonna have to keep up.
Right. Anybody have any, did that answer your question? I hope so. If not, after this, I can get really technical with it if you want to review it.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a recommendation?
I would like to see this become part of our code.
Motion?
I would move that we recommend adoption of this code to the city council.
Second. Adair?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Murrow?
Yes.
Cornelia?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight, discussion on electric vehicle charging stations on city sidewalks.
So this is, really just want to start the discussion on this. We don't really have anything in our ordinances right now that will allow or prohibit an electric vehicle charging station to be put on the city sidewalk, but I feel like this is something that, you know, we will potentially see more and more of going forward, and so I would just like to have some discussion on what, what you all think, you know, do we need to have some ordinances on this? Do we, what do we need to do to kind of set, set the future of the city up on where, how we would like to see these charging stations be? So really just some discussion, and then Chief Miller and I will look, if you want to walk down the ordinance path, we'll look to, you know, take it to our ordinance committee, we'll look to see, you know, kind of based on the discussion, what direction we need to take.
I think additionally, you know, not just what types of, you know, charging station would we permit and under what circumstances and conditions, but also if the role of the planning commission and its strategic use of property throughout our community, where would those, you know, zones be appropriate for charging stations and that sort of thing as well?
Is there an age on that for scooters?
Well, this wouldn't be for scooters, this would be...
For electric vehicles.
For electric cars, car charging. Cars you'd use them to, group them?
It looks like it does.
We were out in Animal the other day and we saw some.
Pass that around.
We saw some at the...
Do businesses put these in, or entrepreneurs like buy the space to put that in?
Here's, here's the plans for one that we're doing that updates in right now.
Is this for cars or the...
This is for cars.
Cars, yeah.
Full-time car setup.
Not the scooters, I thought you were talking about scooters.
I think it's gonna have to happen, they're coming.
They, they would not be property of the municipality. They would be, you know, either leasing property from us or another entity.
On the sidewalks?
On the sidewalks. On the obstruction.
Probably, yes.
Do you remember that?
No.
I did, I did some ordinance research to see why it actually could be on any sidewalk, and there, and within our city ordinances, it says you can obstruct any city sidewalk in there. So actually, I sent that, I sent that ordinance what I thought it fell under... So actually, I, I sent that, I sent that ordinance, what I thought it fell under for, you know, legal advisement from Rick, and then Live Kelly and Manager Brady, um, to view that, to make sure that we were on the same page, to send to, um, Rick to review, to make sure that I'm interpreting that all correct. But that was the only thing that I could see within ordinance or find that talked about anything of obstructing, and like I said, these look like gas pumps, so they would be setting, um, out in front, and, and it was proposed to us in a construction project, and that's what brought this to our attention, the, the construction project that I'm passing arounds for the days end, they're putting them in, in their parking lot, um, for people or guests staying at their, um, hotel, uh, but this one, you know, was proposed to be downtown on the square, um, so, which made us start looking to see if there was anything, um, that restricted or safety measures. Now, there is, there's codes, um, that are, that are coming out in two thousand and eighteen on electrical vehicle charging stations, um, but right now, they just fall under the electrical code, um, but there'll be some different codes that are coming out. International fire code addresses them in the two thousand and eighteen code, which may or may not be adopted in November, uh, through legislation, and that's when we change.
Is it gonna be on the inside of the square or the outside?
Uh, it was proposed to be on the outside, um, so that was reasonings where people more frequently walk, ride bikes, do different things, safety issues that we were looking at, um, but easier to get three-phase voltage to the outside sidewalk versus the inside without boring and doing different things like that.
So if the business wants to put them out in front of the business, they have to put them in themselves?
That, that's what was requested to us, that they would put them in, um, in front of their business. And so that's what has, um, um, brought us to looking into this on, on it. I mean, I don't know of a lot of electric cars around here, um, maybe some hybrids, but, um, not just full-on electric, um, but we do, we do have some fire training on, um, charging stations that we've been going through and different things on it, and they can get pretty violent. So, we were looking at that for safety reasons also.
Chief Miller, are there other cities that have adopted ordinances related to electrical charging?
There is, there's other cities, uh, larger cities, um, than Alva, of course, that have adopted ordinances and, um, but most of them that you generally see are, are not on their main sidewalks, they're, they're in their own parking areas or parking garages, somewhere that they have a fire suppression system, you know, uh, in it or close to it.
So if the scooters are on the sidewalks, and now these things on the sidewalk?
No, 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 no. The scooters aren't supposed to be on the.
I know they're not supposed to be on the sidewalk, but that doesn't say, they're on the sidewalk.
Well, I got that over last night.
I know, I sat in front of Brantone the other day just to watch, and oh my, yes, they're on the sidewalk.
That, that is essentially a separate issue.
And that is a separate.
I know it is, but I understand it, how much can we?
I don't know that I've ever seen electric charging stations set up.
Like was being.
On a sidewalk. Because on a sidewalk, I don't know that I would want to navigate stepping over the cords, but I've seen them on pull-ins.
Pull-ins.
Where they, they had specifically.
Parking lots.
A pull-in where they had three, three spots on one side, three on the other, and they had station.
Parkings, they could have station.
I think you get in trouble with if you've got some older lady that parking spot, she can park her whether it's a charger or not.
Well.
And I think that's probably more the issue that we want the planning commission.
Yeah. The, the parking and usage.
I'm gonna park here, go in here, I don't care if it's a charger or not.
Cause the.
Exactly.
If they're parking in a street, if they're putting them in street parking, that is city property, and it's currently not defined how to allow or not allow that.
I would get that, that's maybe there is, so.
So that would be rare.
And I don't think a sidewalk is a good, is a good place, because even the ones that I've seen have been like at the back of a hotel. It's clearly marked, um.
And I've never seen them impeding or even next to a sidewalk.
Yeah. Or on a side street or one over here behind Co-op, if they're stationed here, that'd be a good spot.
In a parking lot somewhere.
Or in a parking lot or on a side street.
And then that person would be wondering.
So those, those would be different because they'd be on private property.
Yeah.
Are you wanting, I mean, are you thinking is that like a zoning, an area where we can zone to have those potentially, or?
Well, unanimously, like, right out here, you get pull-throughs.
That's a good.
If you wanted to line the pull-throughs with them, I mean, that's, there, there's not like a walking area, you know what I'm saying, but right out here in front.
And as far as the planning commission is concerned, I, I would want you to say yes, no parking lots, yes, no street parking, yes, no, um, you know, residential areas, you know, those types of things, um, to, to make a determination so that we can, um, draft the proper language or find the proper language that needs to, to be in place for our community.
But also taking, and when you said residential, take into consideration, they do make a charging station for houses for people that own, uh, electric vehicles. They're small, they don't look like what I showed you, they're, they're a smaller box that increases the voltage and allows them to charge.
For me, it's the difference between having a gas can in your garage and having a gas pump in your driveway.
Right.
Right.
And I think people that own it here in town would have their own charging stations at home, because people that come in from out of town.
Right.
That need to have the charging stations.
Yes.
And, and the motel plans that I showed you here makes a lot of sense to me, being on a motel.
I know, from an economic development standpoint, there is a thought process, so there's, there are maps that have come out that have played where there are charging stations, stations from, you know, coast to coast, um, and so this would put Alva on the map, you know, allowing us to have a public charging station. I, I think the thought process is this would put this place on the map and it'd be a draw for people to come through Alva, was the.
And, and the person that brought it down there, she's right, economic development, they wanted it down on the square to bring it to our business district, to direct them down this way, so.
So they pay while they charge, I mean, they, they put their credit card in and that's how they?
Yeah.
So like, take the market, for instance, if you wanted to, to, uh, if the planning commission said it was okay for these to go in commercial parking lots, um, the market, for instance, or Co-op, for instance, could, um, either do it themselves or get into an agreement with one of these companies that provides the service, and then you would have that available, um, in those areas.
So what happens when one blows up?
Well, they're, they do have a, they, it's kinda like gas pumps, you know, when gas pumps are pulled over, they do have automatic shut-off valves or, um, switches that kill the voltage because we are talking about three-phase, um, voltage, so it is, um, dangerous. Now, the videos that we use for our fire training or have seen within our fire training is the lithium batteries actually venting versus the charging stations, um, but they were fed, continuously fed, and of course, a lot of this comes from Europe that they, we get the videos from on it, but, um, it's more the cars and the batteries themselves that are the more dangerous of the two.
The direction I've heard so far is that we would like to see designated areas, um, you don't necessarily wanna see them on public sidewalks. When we talk about designated areas, are there specific areas that you would or would, would not like to see?
I don't have any problems with, you know, it's not better if you feel like, I don't have any problems, like I said, over in the city overflow lot, uh, the courthouse along either side of that courthouse parking, um, any place like that, private property, I'm fine if Love wants to put a few.
Right.
Uh, the hotels wanna put them up, I mean, I think that's great, if an independent business wants to create a pull-in so that they don't have to obscure a sidewalk, I think that's fine with me, I don't see a real good cause for putting them on the square unless we create it.
Unless it's in a parking lot.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other, any other thoughts?
Would there be a setback, you know, that you, I mean, is that part of these codes that are out, Brian, a setback for any pedestrian traffic or anything like that?
Uh, nothing that I've read on the whole deal. It, it just basically, right now, the direction that they, they have given us right now is just the electrical code of how they're installed. They do have, um, barricade blocking in front of them, just like fuel pumps, you know, so you don't run into them. They do have disconnect switches and emergency kill switches, um, also within them, so in case there was an issue, you could actually kill the voltage, so, I mean, that, it doesn't say anything, you know, setback, stand back, but if one were to go, it would be pretty violent until that kill switch would, would go, as would anything, no different than your power lines hanging above your head.
You think they just need information to take the ordinance committee?
I think it is.
Okay. Well, we'll work with the ordinance committee, um, and then bring that back to you guys' personal order.
Item number nine, any remarks or inquiries by the planning commission members? Item number ten, any remarks or inquiries by citizens?
Um, the only, I forgot to mention in there in our report, but our intentions are also to fire back up the strategic, um, property use, um, conversations. You guys got so close to being finished before, uh, or the, the task force did before the coronavirus hit, and so we need to dust that off, get it back out and get it finished so we can, um, move forward with, uh, taking care of these exceptions in our community that need to be, uh, potentially rezoned.
Item number ten, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I like your motion, will you adjourn?
Second down motion.
Did Tyler do these?
Yes.
Number?
Hi.
Propper?
Yes.
Corning?
Yes.
Kidder?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Yes.